Thank you, everyone, for joining us. I'd like to call to order our Board of Ed monthly meeting on January 21st, 2025, at 7:00 PM. I would like to start with a roll call, so that if anybody is new to our audience and is coming, we would like to make sure you know who's up here. So I will start with our board members. I am Deb Schut. I am the chair. We also have Thage Singh, our vice chair.
Present, Deb. Thank you.
Jeff Fleishman, our secretary.
Present, thank you.
Lynn Katz.
Present, thank you.
Sarah Heath.
Here, thank you.
Nicole Russo.
Present, thank you.
Suzanne Zakaris is online with us, joining us through Zoom this evening. Chris Campbell.
Here.
And I believe Ramesh Kanappili is joining us right now. It's okay. It's all good. We got you. Thank you. Good timing. All right, and now we'll move on to our administrators. We have Dr. Carnamola, our superintendent.
Present, thanks.
Mr. Janini, assistant superintendent.
Here, thank you.
Mr. Medic, assistant superintendent.
Present, thank you.
Ms. Russo, our business manager.
Present, thank you.
And Ms. Sardzinski's executive assistant to superintendent and our board clerk.
Present, thank you.
Thank you. If you would all join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Thank you. I'm excited. We have some recognition this evening, and I always like to start us off by reading our mission statement to get us in the right headspace. Our mission is to inspire in each student a joy and a passion for learning, a commitment to excellence, personal integrity, and social responsibility. And I'm thrilled to see who we are acknowledging tonight, and I'm going to throw it to Mr. Janini, so that he can introduce you all to us.
All right, well, good evening, everyone. It's really an honor to recognize these members of our teaching and learning team this evening. If you've heard me speak before about our TVAL plan, we kind of refer to the whole thing as what teachers do onstage and offstage. So onstage, the work when your students are there, and offstage, when you're planning and prepping. If we keep with that stage analogy, I think we could refer to these individuals as the production crew, right? Kind of works. They're doing everything else that happens behind the scenes, from writing curriculum, developing model lessons, creating assessments, and really doing some of the research and development for the new things that we bring to district. I know I feel very fortunate to have all of them here, and I could go on and on, but I did ask some members of our leadership team to join me, because, as we say, it takes a village, and I think it speaks to the work that they really do here, not just with us at Central Office, but out in the buildings with the school leaders and the teachers every day. So I'm going to ask Stephanie and Amy to come up and join me, say a few things about Jody. Krasinski, our director of curriculum instruction and assessment. So come on up, Jody. She's thrilled. So I asked Stephanie and Amy to join me, but I thought about it for a second, and pretty impressive, I don't think there's a single school leader, maybe even close to a teacher in the district, who hasn't worked here without Jody in this role. So when we think about longevity and just everything, in a good way, retention, but also just, I think that staying power speaks to the expertise that she brings to our district and how lucky we are to have her here. So I'm going to turn it over to Amy and Stephanie to say a few things.
Okay. So Jody's dedication to the students and staff in Avon is evident. You can see it in her attention to detail. She recently sent a follow-up email after a teacher meeting with a comprehensive data report, then followed up with a phone call to ensure that I saw the report and to see if I had any questions. But I can always count on the fact that she's going to be there to kind of, you know, help me through that information if I do have questions. You can see it in her daily action. She always either answers her phone, or obviously, if she's not there, calls back. But I also know the best time to reach her is like 5:30, 6 o'clock, when she's like probably one of the only people left in the building. So she is frequently last person in the building. You can see it in her passion. Jody gets excited about teaching and learning. She believes in the power of our staff to make meaningful, measurable impacts on our students in Avon. And, Jody, your leadership throughout the district is admirable, and your partnership as a colleague and friend is invaluable. So thank you for all you do.
Good evening, everyone. I think we all wrote down our remarks, so that we didn't ramble on and on, because we all have so much that we could say about Jody. So it is a privilege for me to be able to speak about the work that Jody has done with me, because as a new leader, two and a half years ago, I don't think I could have done a lot of what we accomplished at the high school without her. First and foremost, she helped us kind of revamp our student assistance team, which you all know is so invaluable, to help our students get the support and the help that they need when they need it. And Jody really helped us get that going. She sat with us, meeting after meeting after meeting, explaining so many things to us just over and over again, especially with some of our testing, with the SAT, the PSAT, the NGSS. She gets all of that stuff done so quickly for us, and if anyone has any questions, she's always so easy to speak to about it, and she answers the questions so quickly. Speaking about data, if you ever have any questions about SAT data, PSAT data, or NGSS data, before you can ask the question, she's in Performance Matters getting you a report before you even ask. She's like, oh, done. I just sent it to you. And you're like, wow, okay. One day, I'm going to learn how to do that, Jody. One day. Right. Why do I have to? We are getting ready to prepare for our neestecennial visit in December, and again, Jody has been so invaluable in helping us with our curriculum audit. Her and her team spent so many hours over the summer doing an audit for us to make sure that all of our Stage Ones were completed and ready to go. And I know between last year and this year, I'm sorry, Jody, she has reset so many Edgiplanet passwords over and over again, and she is willing to sit with any of our teachers for hours, we all know, for hours, to help them get up to speed and comfortable with using Edgiplanet, so that our curriculum is in the right place and in the right format. And if any of you have ever sent Jody any reports that is incorrectly typed or with poor grammar, she's also going to correct that too for you. So she's our resident grammarly, I think. Yeah, she's great at that. But, Jody, your work really has had a lasting impact on everything that we do here, on me, on our administrative staff, on our teachers, and then, of course, on our students. So thank you for everything that you've done, and I appreciate the partnership with you.
So I think it's pretty evident how much Jody cares about her work here in Avon. She's already trying to run away. Yeah.
It's great that the next three people are being honored as well, because all of what was said, I'm in partnership with my team. That's just absolutely amazing, and I can't say enough to you as a group that has allowed us to, this structure in our teaching and learning team has not always been here. It's four years young, and it's amazing how much work has been done in that four years, and how this team has evolved, and what ultra-professionals, the three that you're going to hear about next, do their work daily in our schools. So thank you, and thank you for giving us the opportunity to be a team.
And don't sit down yet, because I want to acknowledge you, too. I have to say, everything that I've heard, I can attest to, but I just want to point out, the sparkle in your eye with the work that you do has always been there. I know that you love it. You speak from the heart. You're so knowledgeable about everything, too. We're so lucky to have you. So thank you for staying with us. I'll ask you, how long have you been with us, Jody?
My daughter is 26, 25 years old.
Yeah, I believe it. And it shows, and you're still as passionate today, I'm sure, as the day that you started. You just get better and better. So thank you for choosing to stay with us. We really appreciate you. We do have a certificate, but I want to clap for you one more time. So Jody, come on forward. We will take a group picture with everybody as well, but...
Oh, thank you. Thrilled. So just hang out, and we'll call you back. Don't go too far.
Yeah.
Well, to Jody's point, takes a village. So I would like to invite up our three curriculum specialists, who are all here with us this evening. Ally Morris, Janessa Blaszek, Sue Delka, come on up. So this is our curriculum specialist team, but I couldn't decide if dream team, think tank, R&amp;D was a better term for them. They're a little bit of all of those things. And actually, I was going to say, I was a little confused this morning, because I came in thinking it was Monday, and it was oddly quiet in our office, and that's because the three of you are out in buildings. But that is because, to that same point, the energy that they bring to this work is contagious, I think is maybe the best way to say it. They are truly passionate about excellent teaching and learning practices, and even have some teachers who came this evening with signs. Alyssa, that was amazing. Thank you. Just in how, I think it speaks again to how much our teachers appreciate them being there. There's so much on teachers' shoulders today, when we think about the work of an educator, and to have someone in your corner like these three, who have looked at the standards, the curriculum in depth, they've tried it out themselves, they're willing to come into your classroom and model a lesson, they've written the assessment, so they know what to expect for the students, and they're there all the time answering emails and phone calls and texts from our teachers to make sure they feel supported. So we're really fortunate to have these three here in our district, so thank you. And we have some principals here as well that wanted to speak, so Noam and Mel, you want to come up and join me?
Well, good evening, everyone. As the newest principal in Avon, it's my privilege to stand before you tonight to honor a truly remarkable group of professionals, our curriculum specialists. Yay. Jess stole my line, but from the moment I joined the district, I was impressed by their passion for education and dedication to what they do. They're not only experts in all things curricular and pedagogy, but they're also lifelong learners, continually seeking out innovative ways to enhance teaching and learning in our schools, talking the talk, but more importantly, walking the walk, and therefore, always I've observed their support for our teachers. They serve as partners, mentors, and problem solvers, always ready to provide guidance, resources, and encouragement. Whether it's collaborating on lesson plans, introducing new instructional strategies, or offering professional development opportunities, they are a constant source of knowledge and inspiration. Teachers know they can count on them, not just for answers, but for genuine partnership. I've also noticed that they have the ability to really think ahead, proactively anticipating the needs of both teachers and students. They take initiative to address challenges before they arise, and they're always responsive, ensuring that teachers feel supported and empowered to do their best work. Working alongside them so far has been awesome, because they truly believe in the power of education, and because they are so committed to fostering a productive learning environment for everyone. They know what it means to serve in education, with vision, with care, and a focus on building a brighter future. So on behalf of all of us, I want to thank you for your tireless efforts and your commitment to excellence. It's been an honor to work with you, and I look forward to accomplishing so much more together.
Just began the celebration by talking about, there's kind of like two sides to this role. There's the public-facing role that we all get to see and celebrate, and then there's the behind-the-scenes work. That's the grunt work. That's the thing that really drives improvement forward in our district. And it has been an absolutely incredible honor to be able to work with these three professionals, who are experts in basically everything, who are up for, and this is such a compliment, a good-spirited debate about best practices and growing together. And I think one of the biggest compliments to them is that teaching can be a pretty isolating profession. It is possible to go in, close your door, do your work, and not be connected to a broader kind of grade-level team, school, community, et cetera. And all three of you have been absolute masters at opening the doors, creating trust rapport, and a wonderful positive relationship with everybody, so that we all have benefited from the fact that you have this deep, rich knowledge base, you're not afraid to share it, and our staff is so open to it. Not everybody can do that. That's a really, really hard kind of a thing to get your heads around. You guys are masters at it. And so on behalf of Mel, myself, Amy, and all the principals, and all of our faculties, we are so, so honored to have you supporting the good, hard work that you guys do. Thank you.
I've got to say, I'm loving that you're all huggers. That works. That's good.
I'm not hugging you.
So don't go away, ladies. Let me just take a quick moment to acknowledge as well how grateful, again, that we are to have you on this team. I've had the privilege of witnessing a couple of you in action. We're going through so many changes with the math and with curriculum, just growing on a regular basis. And I will say that the vibe that you create in a room, the energy that you create, is just so seamless, and it looks so collaborative. There is no hierarchy. You are literally teammates with that teacher, and the students know who you are. That is important to me, that you're engaging with them, and they know who you are in their life, too. So you're not only growing young minds, but you're continuing to spark our adults as well, and it's just lovely to see. And it is obvious how much you love your work, so I appreciate that you are hopefully going to let me hug you, and you come over here, too. So we would like to give you certificates as well, and then I would love for the four of you to join us over here, so we can take a group picture together. But first, come on forward, ladies.
Janessa? Thank you. Ally? Thank you. And Sue. Thank you. Congratulations. Come on over. Let's do it. [laughter] As you know, we try to recognize students and student achievements, primarily at our board meetings, and the adults that go alongside of them, that work in the school district. There would be far too many students we would have to bring in tonight to do that with you, which is why we have only, quotes, only these four individuals here. But I just wanted to take a moment again and say, repeat everything everyone already said. We really thought it was important to recognize you at this juncture, because we have sat at this table for many, many nights over the past few years, for, to be exact, talking about the work that you are leading, doing, assisting with, whether it is developing brand-new curricula for us, or helping us manage new items that come to us as requirements from the state, the entire gamut of that. You have been leading the work most of the time, and alongside of us the rest. I just wanted to make sure that you knew how much you were appreciated. As many times as we've talked about you in your absence, we had to make you come out on a frigid night. I apologize. So thank you again, and thank you for all of your work, Jody, Sue, Ally, and Jess. Wait, I'm still missing, and Janessa, sorry. Still missing someone, going down the line. We couldn't be this far in publishing our curricula, analyzing the data that we are analyzing, and trying to ensure a consistently great experience for our students across the entire school district, no matter which school or classroom they are in, and you are an integral part of that. So thank you.
Absolutely. Yes, thank you. And so at this time, we are not offended. If you want to excuse yourselves, I know you brought some of your loved ones with you as well, so if you would like to, that is perfectly acceptable. Thank you for taking the time to let us celebrate you. All right. Okay, moving on. Can I please have a motion to approve the Board of Education's special budget meeting minutes of December 17th, 2024?
So moved.
Thank you, Lynn. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Chris. All in favor? I see Suzanne. We have nine unanimous. Thank you. A motion to approve the Board of Education's regular monthly meeting minutes of December 17th, 2024?
So moved.
All right, Sarah. Do I have a second?
I'll second, Deb.
Thank you, Thage. All in favor? Aye, passes unanimously with nine again. And a motion to approve the Board of Education's special budget workshop meeting minutes of January 14th, 2025?
So moved, Deb.
All right, thanks, Thage. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Lynn. All in favor? Aye, passes unanimously with nine again. Thank you. Communication from the public. Do we have anyone who is interested in speaking? Excellent. So before you come up, Leah, let me just read the instructions, so that we're consistent in doing so. This is the section of our meeting where Avon residents have the floor to share their thoughts and their concerns with the board. It's not an opportunity for conversation, rather, it's the board's chance to listen to feedback from the community. If you add your name to the list, Ms. Sardzinski will then call you up in order. You must state your name and address for the record. Each speaker will have up to three minutes to speak. In an effort to hear as many of you as we can, we must adhere to this time limit. You can certainly state that you agree or disagree with a previous comment, if you'd prefer to be brief. Brevity will allow more attendees to be heard. After 15 minutes are up, the board may choose to extend public comment or not. No speaker will include charges or complaints of a personal nature against any individual Avon Board of Education member or individual employee of the Avon Board of Education, whether the speaker names the individual or not. Please refrain from clapping or cheering. Ms. Sardzinski will be our timekeeper tonight. If you should reach two and a half minutes, she will alert you with a 30-second warning, and at the three-minute mark, you'll be alerted again to signal that your time is up. We welcome your engagement and participation. Is it just Leah? Christine? Is it just Leah on? Okay, so please, Ms. Kyler, come forward.
[inaudible]
That one's fine.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Leah Kyler, and I'm a current senior here at the high school. I'm here tonight to express my concerns with recent news I heard about the Wellness Skills class being cut next year. Since seventh grade, I've been an active participant in the district's unified community, and I currently serve as the co-president of Best Buddies. I've seen time and time again the positive impact these programs have on people of all abilities. For those who do not know what the Wellness Skills class is, it is a gym class open to students of all abilities that focuses on fostering meaningful relationships and providing a safe and enriching space for everyone. Last year, I was lucky enough to be a Wellness Skills mentor, and I can say with full confidence that it was one of my favorite classes I've taken in high school. Throughout the semester, I saw how the class benefited everyone. I watched as friendships blossomed and confidence grew. I watched as mentors learned the importance of inclusion, and found joy in meeting and collaborating with a variety of peers. In the Portrait of the Graduate, it says that the district is committed to meeting the needs of all students. However, by cutting this course, it appears that a pivotal course is being denied for many students. This course serves the safe space and is the backbone of the inclusive community this school has. It is the one opportunity for students with disabilities to have a course directly tailored to their needs and interests with peers outside of their classroom circle. It is also the one class in the high school that fosters ongoing and supportive interaction between people of all abilities. At every unified conference I have attended, I have heard story after story of the successes when a school initiates a new unified program, but yet we are removing a crucial part of ours. This class means so much to so many people, and I urge you to please reconsider cutting it. I also want to share a statement submitted by former student Peyton Budwitz, who graduated last year. Through AHS's mission of increasing collaboration to work towards the Portrait of the Graduate, I can say that the unified PE class is where this shines the most. Students of all grades and abilities come together to create the most incredible classroom environment, which expands throughout the school, community. I have seen so many people eager to step in and befriend students with disabilities, which can be seen in walking with kids to other classes after that class ends, sitting together at lunch, or making plans to hang out at a school sporting event. These connections would not be as strong and prevalent without that class. Best Buddies is a great start to creating an inclusive community at Avon, but this class goes above and beyond in involvement. During my last semester at Avon in this class, we had a research project on countries in the Olympics, and we got to present about them and design an Olympic game to compete as a class. We learned teamwork, research skills, presentation skills, and project management. This class is so much more than just gym, and it is truly devastating that it's being overlooked in this way. Thank you.
Thank you, Leah. We appreciate your feedback. We'll make sure someone gets back to you on that, Leah, okay? All right, is there anyone else on the list? All right, Alyssa? All right, next, we have our student representative, Aliana. Want to tell us what's going on in the schools?
Yes, thank you. I'm Aliana White, for anybody that doesn't know me. So as for RBS, we have that our kindergarten registration is beginning soon for the little kids. This also is applying to PGS. A lot of the things in RBS and PGS overlap, so PGS has their Spirit Day on the 31st, and they recently had their Disney on Ice celebration on the 4th of this month. The PTO is beginning to invite kids to the Hartford Wolf Pack for February to watch a hockey game, and kind of going with that, some Wolf Pack, two Wolf Pack players visited the school to talk to kids, which was a very good success, from what I've heard. As for TBS, we have the fifth-grade concert tomorrow for choir, orchestra, and band, and the sixth-grade concert on Thursday, and then we have quite a bit for AMS and AHS. So for the middle school, we have that a lot of our students were accepted to the Northern Region Middle School Music for orchestra, choir, and band. We have that there is a comsci program called Steel City Codes that is beginning, that began this month, and they meet one hour every Monday. Students are beginning to compete in chapter competitions for math counts. There was a book talk for the public library on the 13th in the school's library. Something very exciting is that the Areosa, which is the advanced choir, will be singing the National Anthem at the Wolf Pack game. They are also hosting a ski bus for the kids. The seventh graders are in an anatomy unit. This, by the way, forgot to mention that the information for AMS and AHS is courtesy of Matty Van Valkenburg, who couldn't be here today. The Ski and Snowboard Club is also starting up this month. And then for AHS, we have quite a bit. So we have that Avon Voices for Equity is starting to prepare their Diversity Week presentations, which will foster communication around the school. We have a book drive that is beginning. We have auditions for our school musical, Mama Mia, that is going to be happening very soon. We have a very exciting Yukon nursing visit, visit to our school in the community room. There's also a Medtronic internship for women in STEM coming up. AHS students are currently in midterms at the moment, and the second semester will be starting next week. College Experience Night is coming up on the 30th as well, and our spring sport registration is now opening. Thank you.
Thank you, Aliana. And Matty, in her absence, we appreciate you doing that for us. Thank you. Moving on to our financial report with Ms. Russo.
Good evening, everyone. Our financial report for the month ending December 31st, 2024, so much the same as we discussed in November. We ended the fiscal, the calendar year 2024 with low over $4.2 million unencumbered, or 6.12%, right on target with the year prior of $4.2 million and 6.25%. We saw some variances in salary lines, particularly in the teacher's sub-instruction line. That was due to long-term subs for leaves. We have some savings to offset those in open positions for our technology education teacher that was unfilled, and some of those leaves being unpaid left some positive variances to cover those leaves. In non-certified salaries, we continue to see leaves on custodian maintainers, our administrative assistants. We are currently, as of December 31st, still onboarding for our administrative assistant, too, at the high school, and our library and media aide. Our parent educators interventionist, our contract settlements was accepted by the board, so the retro pay and new rates went into effect back to 7-124 for that union. So you'll see in the financials that the impact of that. In other expenses, we discussed at the finance committee, I think at length, the increases we were seeing from Eversource in our electric bills, why we're seeing some of those increases anywhere from 15 to 33% at our buildings. That is a pass-through, there's our pass-through charges that the state had implemented into Eversource, that were passed through to all consumers. They include charting station fees, as well as unpaid balances, community funding fees that were passed on to us. So we are seeing those increases year over year, and again, you'll see that in the budget later. HVAC repairs, we're continuing to see some additional repairs and breakdowns, particularly with the cold weather. That's when things tend to act up. We're continuing to see that even today. Some of our members didn't have heat in their offices today, but we're working on that.
that was unfilled, and some of those leaves being unpaid left some positive variances to cover those leaves. In non-certified salaries, we continue to see leaves on custodian maintainers, our administrative assistants. We are currently, as of December 31st, still onboarding for our administrative assistant too at the high school and our library media aide. Our parent educators interventionist, our contract settlements was accepted by the board, so the retro pay and new rates went into effect back to 7-124 for that union. So you'll see in the financials that the impact of that. In other expenses, we discussed at the finance committee, I think at length, the increases we were seeing from Eversource in our electric bills. Why we're seeing some of those increases anywhere from 15 to 33% at our buildings, that is a pass-through, those are pass-through charges that the state had implemented into Eversource that were passed through to all consumers. They include charting station fees, as well as unpaid balances, community funding fees that were passed on to us. So we are seeing those increases year over year, and again, you'll see that in the budget later. H vac repairs, we're continuing to see some additional repairs and breakdowns, particularly with the cold weather. That's when things tend to act up. We're continuing to see that even today. Some of our members didn't have heat in their offices today. We're working on that. So you'll continue to see some additional expenses there. In special education, we were looking at some legal fees, the timing being off from the encumbrances we currently had in place when we were revising those. In contracted services, we continue to see a rise in the valuations needed for our special education students and the outsourcing for those.
Thank you, Susan. Are there any questions? Thank you very much. We appreciate it. You always do such a cohesive job for us. All right, next, committee liaison reports, curriculum and professional practices. Lynn?
Okay, our next meeting is, I think, next week, isn't it? It's January 28th.
Thank you very much. Finance, I am fortunate enough to chair that and acknowledge that Susan just did a fabulous job explaining where we are at the moment, and we certainly will be discussing the budget coming up under new business. Negotiations. Suzanne, I'll just speak on your behalf, if you'd like, that we are currently not working with any other groups at the moment, but we will keep you apprised if that shifts. Policy, Thage?
We're still on track to meet February 4th, Deb. Thank you.
Thank you. And our liaison report, Capital Region Education Council, Chris?
Yes, our next meeting is on the 19th, and prior to that, we had the legislative breakfast on the 11th. Yes.
Excellent, thank you. So as far as my board chair update, again, I just want to thank you all for holding out during this very cold weather. I can only imagine at the elementary level, if that's keeping kids inside, that's a different experience for recess, and I can remember those days of monitoring, so I give you a lot of credit. So hang in there, we're getting through. It's New England, we can do this, we're rock solid. But just really, truly know that we support you and we appreciate all of you, and thank you for hanging out even longer than you necessarily need to in these meetings. We really appreciate it. And we're looking forward to just continuing to work together. So I will move it to Dr. Carnemola for the superintendent report.
Thank you. We'll do the hiring report with Mr. Medic.
Good evening. We have a very small hiring report. We are pleased to welcome three new members to the district. We'd like to welcome Marilyn Fay, who'll be joining us as parent educator at Pine Grove School, Savannah Kennedy, who'll be joining us in our nutrition service department at Pine Grove School, and Kristen Marshall will be joining us tomorrow, actually, for her first day. She'll be replacing Ms. Ellen Farrow, who will be retiring after 46 years in nursing field and the last 17 at Thompson Brooks School. And Ellen's last day will be on January 31st. That's the hiring report for tonight, folks.
Thank you. The enrollment is pretty steady. We've seen, if you go through where the three net students down are, it's, we are up two in pre-K, down one in kindergarten, down one in second grade, down one in sixth grade, as a result of some movement in and out of town. In terms of general updates, and as Leah knows, because I said right before we started, and you all know, we don't usually respond directly, because it's not conversation, so to speak, on the agenda, because it's not an agenda item, but since Leah is still here, and I know at least she can hear me say this, and I'll still catch up at school, I think it's important to say something about what Leah just said, because when we talk about the budget tonight, we will also talk about wellness, and they're not related. The course that Leah is talking about at the high school that has for a while been a way that does exactly what Leah just said, in having students with disabilities and non-disabled peers together. We are, I wouldn't call it cutting it, we are making some changes with curriculum to make sure that we're meeting the needs of students and in compliance with the law in terms of wellness credits. So we're looking for, to do that with some other ways for our non-disabled peers to still serve as mentors. That's what the team is still working on with the high school. So just wanted to make sure I said that, because when I speak later on about the wellness position, it's not at the high school, and it's not related. It's actually related to enrollment in the younger grades. So we can talk about that another time. We're not all the way down the path with making those changes yet, but that's the spirit, and we've been working at it for some years, going through students' IEPs, going through the wellness curriculum, and trying to make sure that we're matching up with what the courses that they take here, while still providing opportunities for students to serve as mentors, because that is very important, and as I know Leah knows too, because she's participated, and you all know, because we've had to add it in from a budgetary standpoint. We have been invested in that work from the Unified Sports perspective too, in putting more of those opportunities in. But again, that's separate from the curriculum, so go ahead, Jess.
Well, and just the teaching assistant mentor position still exists for, so you can do that in wellness or any course, so that, you know, opportunity still exists. You just have to connect with a teacher in the department, talk about your interest.
So we're still working on that. General updates, good news. The source of the school delay today, the plow, the one of two plows that has a salter on it, I got the call this afternoon, was fixed, so I think that's good news. I'm not sure the students think it's good news, just in case we needed it again, as they told me it was nice to have a couple of hours, no matter what the reason was this morning, from our high school students at least. In terms of general updates, I'll keep it brief, because we have a bit to discuss tonight, obviously with the budget, and also with the school calendar for the coming year, a couple of changes there. So unless you have any other questions right now, I'll stop there and move forward, because I think there'll be quite a bit of discussion when we get to the other agenda items.
Everyone all set? All right, thank you. Okay, so next, I have a motion to approve the budget transfers under the consent calendar. Thank you, Jeff. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Chris. All in favor? Aye, passes unanimously with nine. Thank you. We do not have old business. We will jump to new business. Discussion and possible approval of the 2025 to 2026 school year calendar.
So not a ton of changes, meaning this is in a year where we're looking to add additional days in for professional learning. We did that, as you know, a couple of years ago, trying to make some better use of some half-days that we added in. We did go through again, though, and make a few changes after living through the calendar that we're in, including in trying to determine when those half-days would fall, because one of the things we are trying to do is not disrupt numerous weeks of school, for example, in the same month, so we try to stay away from when we know there are other days off around them. We did also try to keep them on Wednesdays, which, as you know, we started doing, I think in this year. Could have been last year, that's, they're blurring together a little bit at this point. The winter break, just like this year, is a little bit of a different style because of when the holidays fall. So you remember this winter, we were off on Monday, the 23rd, which would normally be a half-day and the 24th, because it just didn't make sense to bring people back in after the weekend for a half of day. This year, as you can see, it's pushed a little bit forward, so it's actually the opposite on the back end of that winter break. We are recommending the second be off, so that we're, again, not bringing people back from break for one day on the Friday. So still is, it's a little bit odd the way it's falling before the 24th and the 25th, but with the possibility of missing one and a half days, that changes things, and it would have pushed us another two days further out in June also. So that's why the recommendation is full day on the 22nd, half-day on the 23rd, as usual, but then to not bring folks back until January, the, looking back at it, 5th. Other questions that you might have about the calendar?
Go ahead, Lynn.
Just a confirmation, 11-4, which is Election Day, it says no school for students. I'm just confirming, that's also a professional learning day.
Yes.
Okay, I don't know if it needs to say that, because it says it on another place.
It says in service in the green, if you look down in the legend. Do you see that, Lynn?
Under March.
It said November.
Right next to June.
Yeah. Yep, we'll make sure it's clear.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
And we haven't always, like, because of presidential election years, for example, we have not, this year being an example, we did not bring everyone in to try to stay out of the way of a larger number of people at the polls. But this year, yes, we're going back to it being a professional learning day.
All right, any other questions? Okay. Ready for action?
Yes, unless you have other questions for me. That's, I said there weren't many changes, except those couple of anomalies.
Okay, very good. Do I have a motion to approve the calendar for 2025 to 2026 school year? All right, thank you, Sarah. Do I have a second? Second, by Lynn. All in favor? Aye, thank you, Suzanne. Passes unanimously. Thank you. All right. Next, we move on to discussion and possible approval of the Avon Public Schools 25-26 budget.
Wait, give Christine a second to pull that up. As you know, it's odd for me when we're doing this kind of work to sit here with you, but not set up for me to come out there, so I'm gonna have to manage from this seat once Christine is able to pull up. I put this, Susan and I, thank you, Susan, put this together into some slides to be able to put on the screen, as we normally do, even though, as you know, with the last three workshops that we've had together, we didn't do it in the same way, and that's one of the things that I meant when I said we knew we were going to go at the process of it a little bit different this way. Not so much the process behind the scenes, as Jess, I think, referred to earlier as the kind of grunt work, the behind-the-scenes work that we are doing. Budget was done much the same as it always is. We are always going line by line, we are always looking back through what we know students need, and the addressing staffing in that arena and so forth. But the process with you as a board, as you know, we had, we met one more time than we normally would before tonight also. So forgive me and us if much of what we put up tonight and speak about is not that much different than the last time we were together, we were just together last week, but at a full board meeting where we know we have more people that are able to see what we are discussing, also, we like the slides to be able to stand alone from people who were not here at the meeting, or are not able to watch or listen to the entirety of it later. So Christine, if you would go to the next one for me, please. Thank you. So as always, we've started this budget process, we start everything else in looking at our mission statement, and working to connect that to the Blueprint for Excellence and the Portrait of the Graduate, which we now have working in concert. From a budget process standpoint, as I said, very much behind the scenes, it has, if you go to the next one, please, Christine, then the same process in terms of trying to prioritize what's in this budget, and identify the priorities that support the Blueprint for Excellence, and numerous meetings over time with both faculty, staff, and administrators, and then the Board of Education, conversations between the town manager and I, Susan and Tom on the finance side, conversations between me and other Avon officials, including the Chief of Police, talking about our SROs and so on, for example, and as we come here tonight, and we're still, as you know, and the budget process, very much ahead of time in terms of much of what you see in the state, in part because the funding is not released for quite some time. As we get here tonight, this is still where we are projecting. I say that now, and I'll say it again later, only because, as you know, even after the board adopts a budget, there's still work that continues, both for us behind the scenes and at times with you, again, as a board, coming back to potentially make changes when we see changes come up along the way, because it is a long time between now and the referendum in May. Budget terms, I know we discuss these each year. I know that this year, we have board members that have been, all of you have been here for at least one budget cycle, so I think you're more familiar with the terms that we use throughout the budget. Still, I think it's good for folks who may not work with it as intricately as we do to know what we are talking about, when we're talking about the gross budget versus the net budget and the non-tax revenue. In other words, the funding sources for the budget. And when we go to the town, we take what is known as the gross budget, or they will refer to it on the town side as the quote "gross-up" budget often, because we are projecting both the needs and the revenue. And so that is the gross budget, if you will, because the revenue goes to the town. The town, for all intents and purposes, to bring it down a common speech, it's as if the town writes a check to the Board of Ed once the budget is finally adopted after the referendum, or unfortunately, as was the case last year, when the town council acted to set the budget after the referendum had failed. So you always see a higher percentage increase when you look at the gross budget, and we'll get there again in a second, than you do the net, because that's with the revenue worked in. Not that the revenue is necessarily going up, but the revenue is worked in, if you could keep going, Christine. Thank you. Again, our Blueprint for Excellence focus areas, and this is one of the things I talked with you about being different as we went through the workshop process, we very often have broken down the priorities when we were looking to make large shifts, either in additions or subtractions, or reductions, or reallocations, when we are doing the budget during the workshops. We didn't do as much of that this year in quantifying it in this way, because that was one of the ways we did this budget differently. Four years ago, actually, five years ago, I think, we sat at this meeting, and the curriculum specialists, who are the three who are here tonight, for example, not them, but their positions, we were talking about as an addition, and in part, a reallocation of some other staff when we had some retirements to those three positions as a part of the Blueprint for Excellence focus area of student learning. So tonight, if you could go to the next one for me, you'll again see that we are connecting things back. They are not necessarily additions to the budget, however, and as you very well already know, we've been working hard to reallocate as much as we can or reduce it, given the status of inflation, the reevaluation, the tax increases. We've been working very hard to be fiscally responsible, at the same time, we keep meeting the needs of the students and moving the district forward. But these are the four categories in which we look at the budget when we go through. If you could keep going for me, thank you. So here's the first place where you see what I'm saying, the gross versus the net. I'm sorry, because I have the wrong one in front of me, which is why I have to put my glasses on. Okay, now I have the right one, thank you, sorry. We had printed both of these out to make sure that you all had a printout also. Yep, yep, I've got it, got it back. So as of tonight, we are down to a 4.56 on the net side, 4.51 on the gross side. We started, as you know, when we looked at all of the requests from all of the departments and the buildings, over 7%. It's taken quite a great deal of work by us behind the scenes and you as a board to get here tonight. Do I know that this will still ultimately be exactly what the number is by the time people are voting in May? No, for several reasons. One, these are revenue projections on our side, they will continue on the town side, which is why you very often see this number change, once we are further down the line with the town council and the Board of Finance. The governor, for example, typically doesn't release the state budget, which tells the towns the exact dollar amounts, sometimes they're not exact, that they will get until usually April. Sometimes it's as late as mid-April. So might you see these numbers change? Yes, for that reason, and also because things happen in the school district between now and then, if there are more retirements and people need to be replaced at different salary amounts, if students come into the district with different needs, or leave the district that had different needs that maybe had additional services. This can fluctuate. Nonetheless, as we sit here tonight, this is the projected budget that we are talking about with you, that the board by charter has to take action on to be able to turn into the town before they meet to discuss the same. So tonight is the last night. We are together unless we were to schedule another meeting in the timeline to do that. Keep going for it, Christine, thank you. For, I think it's always a good thing to show for visual folks, and can you see that out there? Either of them? Yeah, I know. So we have it, can you please? So we have it, can you please? Sorry, I just thought about that as we're here, because they have one in front of them too. So I can turn at least one, probably this one is better, because it's mostly focused that are on that side of the room that wouldn't be able to see this otherwise. Better? Christine, you want to just go back one slide for me so that everyone could see what I was talking about before we got to here? And Kathleen, obviously, we can share this with you too, because if you want to be able to communicate back to the Board of Finance from here tonight. Thank you, Tom. Okay. And Suzanne, are you seeing online? You have the presentation, correct? Yes, okay. Go ahead, Christine, move forward again for me, please. Just to put it in different perspective, from a visual standpoint, this is how it shakes out when you're talking about the big categories that are inherent in the 500-plus line item budget. Our salaries and benefits, again, below 80% of the budget. A typical, what you typically see in school districts, large or small, is generally speaking about 80% of the budget is usually salaries and benefits. So we are still within the realm that we normally see, as you'll see, and we talked about as a board previously, where actually the impact of the salaries on the overall increases has been mitigated quite a bit from what we've seen in some of the other years, even with new contracts. Move forward for me again, Christine. Thank you. Another way of looking at it, I know you saw this already. It had different, some changes in the numbers since you saw it last, though, as a board when we were together last week, because as I told you, we would, we continued going back through each line and revisiting some pieces of this. So the bottom line numbers here are different when you look at this tonight. If you look at the salaries and benefits, again, as I just mentioned, I think this is an interesting phenomenon to look at. We are talking about 71.76% of the overall increase. So the increase is 4.5% for argument's sake. 71% of what's driving that, almost 72%, is salary and benefits. However, it's less of an overall driver than it has been in previous years. If you could go to the next one for me again, just another way of looking at it. Again, I think it's helpful to see it in different ways, particularly for folks who are looking at this from a visual perspective. Susan, we don't, yes, the other, can you, can you just go forward a couple for me, Christine? Because this one. I think this one shows what I was just saying to you about the impact of the salaries best. If you look, the blue is is it 22, 23? 23, 24, thank you, because I can't see from here either. 23, 24 is blue, 24, 25 is the year that we're living in, and 25, 26 is gray. So when you look at that comparison over time in this fashion, I think you can see better what it is that I'm saying related to salaries. The benefits, as you see, climbed up each year. That's as a result, will back up of increases to insurance and dental in this year. And in this year, there is an increase, as you know, and we'll put it back up again, to the OPEB, the other pension post-employment benefits, which include town pensions, not state pensions, not state teacher pensions, but town pensions that were underfunded last year because when we made reductions along the way during the process for the referendum, OPEB was underfunded by both the town and the board, and we discussed that at the time. Now, this, part of this increases as a result of putting that money back in this year, that, at least some of it, that we took out last year in addition. Again, we'll look exactly at those numbers, but I just thought it would be good to see this comparison at this point. Go ahead, Jeff.
Looking at the
Stop me anytime.
I'm sorry, looking at that three-year budget driver. I don't need it now, is it possible to get the actual numbers? Dollar amounts for the salaries and the benefits?
Yeah.
Not just the percentage, so we can just?
Yeah.
Okay, I appreciate it.
Those are, that's easy. Might have it before we leave here, depending on how things go. If Susan's able to sign into the, to the right docs, we'll see. If you could back, go back for me, please, Christine, to where we were. Okay, so that's fine, go ahead, one more. Go back here. So breaking down the the drivers for this year. Fixed costs, as we refer to them, in part because they're the cost of doing business, and some of them we don't determine. We have some say in them. For example, we talk about health insurance. Yes, we, there are contracts that are negotiated both with our union and non-union employees, although our non-union employees who do take the insurance, generally speaking, mirror what they look like in the associations, because they need to from the insurance plan perspective. So yes, there are some ways that we impact those through negotiations, for example. But generally speaking, we call them fixed costs, because we're projecting forward the costs that we've been given by the broker for in health insurance. That is not the dollar amount, that is the increase. So the increase, year over year, to health insurance that we are responsible for is an $837,000 increase. That is more, a bit more than 1% overall. In other words, if everything in the budget was zeroed out and not one thing cost more in '25, '26 than it costs in '24, '25, that would be a 1.1 something probably in percent increase overall, with nothing else. Add in the OPEB number, and you're more about 1 and 1/4, maybe 1.3%. Pension, that number actually went down. Anywhere you see a parentheses, like you already know this, but everyone may not, that is a negative number. So we were able to reduce the pension contribution. And I know you know the answer to this already, but I know it often comes up out in the community and some folks that are here with us tonight might have the question. What do we mean by pension? Does the town still offer a pension? The answer is no. When we are contributing to the town's pension, we are contributing what we are told to from an actuarial standpoint for both individuals who may be retired already and collecting pension, to keep that viable, and also as they project future for the remaining participants in the plan. At the Board of Ed, there are very few of them. It's really a handful of people, because you have to have been here for more than, this is before my time even, I believe it's 12, maybe 12 years ago? So if you were hired in the town of Avon after 2014, you were unable to participate in the town's pension anymore. But until everyone is no longer a part of it, every year we will contribute. All other benefits, social security, disability, the districts portion of those that went up also, $36,979. Transportation actually went down just a bit. Software, and we talked, we talked quite a bit about that already, we'll talk about it again, has, we've seen an increase in that line. As you know, we went through every single software license that we have. Thank you to IT, Tom, Elizabeth and others for looking through each one of those, doing a return on investment, looking at what software and programs are most utilized by our schools, by teachers, by library media specialists, make sure that everything that we kept on this list was what was being utilized the most. And the increases are what they are. I think we've talked about this in the past also. There are some things that school districts are using now that when they came out were free. There's a reason they're free when they come out, because everyone starts to use them and needs them, and they've gotten enough subscriptions, and now they cost money, and then they cost more and more money. So that's where we are, 108,976 there. Overall, in special education, there's an increase, as we've seen every other year, generally speaking. And I would say we see that all across the state, if not the country. You may have seen even just today, there's been a task force commissioned again by the legislature to look into the costs that local towns are bearing related to special education versus the, I'll call it insufficient funding. In particular, some districts such as our own get related to both education as a whole and special education. That said, we do our best to program in districts and do what we can to keep our students here with us and meeting all of their needs in a way that keeps them at their local school, keeps them with their friends, keeps them here with us in Avon instead of out placements, which are oftentimes not the best scenario for a child and oftentimes also much less cost-effective than running programs for special education in our own district. And we, generally speaking, do that very well. Nonetheless, all of that said, it still is an increase. And there is an increase to special education tuition, which is when we do pay for out-of-district placements, when sometimes inevitably it is in a child's best interest to be in a program besides ours, because no matter what programs we staff and build and write curriculum for and so forth, there are always times where a child's needs are going to be more extensive or specialized than we might be able to meet in a local public school. Some of the time, for example, there are hospitals, hospitalizations related to medical issues. That's clearly something, not something that we are going to manage in district. So the tuition has been increased. That is, as of right now, an actual number, as you can tell by the amount down to the dollar. That changes. One, one student's placement changes, one student moves out, and one student's moved in. That number is in flux very often. But as we come tonight, that's the number we're confident with projecting forward based on what we know about our students today. Likewise, special education transportation, that is down just a bit, because we actually, in the coming year, are projecting needing a bit less specialized in routes and vehicles. And outside transportation to special ed, correct?
More so. Part of the tuition increase is driven by the fact that one of the schools, Farmington Valley Transition Academy, is now charging transportation looped in with their daily tuition cost.
Thank you.
So if you net those two together, gives a little bit better a picture.
Thank you, Susan, almost forgot about that. And finally, I'm sorry, can you go back? There was, there was just one more line I hadn't, I hadn't gotten to. The contracted services, up 62,000 special ed contracted services, because we do break those out. We have contracted services as a whole. And remember, we spoke about that. For example, you see that as the athletic, like the athletic trainer's contract, someone that we do not employ in district, but we have to contract out for similarly special education-specific contracted services. Again, we build our own programming, we hire great people, but there are some times where we still must utilize someone from the outside to do one. I'll use the example again of a medical issue. If a student in their individualized education plan needed a nurse with them at school, either all day or for a portion of the day, something that needs to be done that cannot be done by our regular school nurse, this does happen. That would be an example of a special education contracted service. And I know we went line by line, you know what all of those are already, but just, again, generally speaking, for everyone's benefit, that's what's in that line, and this is the increase we are seeing there for some of those services that we have to contract for, for students with special needs. So get to here, and of the 4.5, 1.68 is what's on the screen in front of you. Pause for one second. Again, I know you all know all of these numbers already, but if you have any questions, please obviously ask. Or if there's anything that we've talked about previously that I'm not hitting on in these categories, let me know so that I can for the greater benefit. Susan, anything I missed? Okay. Okay. Moving forward, thank you. Go again, because we already looked at that one. So as we went through this process, and you know, I like, this is what I like to start with, on the one hand. And on the other hand, we started with the end slide, which is, tell us how much it is, right? And now working back from there. This, however, is how we break down each one of the pieces that we're looking at. And as I said, you're not going to see a lot of additions here, you're going to see more about reductions and/or reallocations. So, and we are still working through these. When we're talking about, we've had to do this numerous times. So on the one hand, while I say we're doing the budget process different, and the flip side, most of it is exactly the same. Some pieces of it, we just haven't had to do in years. So reallocating staff because of changes in enrollment, for example, where it's gone down fairly significantly in a couple of grades. We talked about kindergarten, for example, hard to project. We've had, we've had years where the budget was passed and we were moving on, and we had enough students move in that we had to add another kindergarten teacher of the month before school started, because there were so many students that moved into town that were going to kindergarten. On the flip side, in a year like the one that we're living in, we have less kindergarten students per class, generally speaking, because we had a change in legislation about who could and could not go to kindergarten, a process by which to go if you were for, as you remember, and I won't, this isn't the time for going through all of that again, but I know you were a part of having that conversation. So we left the kindergarten sections exactly the same year over year for that reason, because at the end of the day, we knew we were going to have to live through that new mandate and process for year to make sure that we could accurately, to the best we ever can, project forward who would come to kindergarten. So I'm using that as an example, because it's one you see fluctuate very often from year to year. And numerous times, even just in the times I've been here, and I know it's before my time, we have had to make changes in staff. We did it right before school started this year with moving someone to second grade at Roaring Brook, for example, when we decided that the composition, it wasn't just about the numbers, it was about the needs of the students in the classroom and so forth, and we added in one teacher. That's reallocating staff. What we are working still to do here is just that. We, we do know, as we're here tonight, and I'm able to say this here tonight, because we made sure, we also talked about it with staff. As you know, I don't want to be here in public talking about the fact that someone may not have their position next year, even if that's only that they are going to be somewhere else. If I've been a pre-K teacher for my entire career and next year I need, we need one less section of pre-K, and it's going to impact someone, they should know before we're here in public. So do know that if we are talking about it in this way, our faculty and staff knows the same before we got here tonight, that this was going to be talked about in public. So you can see it this year, in our pre-K, the numbers are lower. Again, this is a tandem situation. It's a combination, who moves into town, who has that age children already at home, and how the changes in the legislation have impacted us. How, how many, and also how many three-year-olds are coming, how many four-year-olds are coming? Those are pieces that we have to look at every year. We are as proactive as we can be, sending home census for people when they register about the ages of children that are at home besides the one that they're registering. So we're getting better and better at projecting it. But in some ways, it's still a wild card. Any grade is, but pre-K and kindergarten in particular are. This year, right now, we see the number of students we have, number one, that would be rolling forward from three to four, or four turning five and going to kindergarten, as we do any other year. Two, at this time of year, we already have in the birth to three referrals from all of the local pre-Ks. So our pupil services department right now knows who will be coming to us from outside of district. That might be two right now, but turning three, and will be in pre-K, so we can count on those numbers. And knowing all of that, we anticipate that we will need one less section of pre-K. Now, you might remember, we had to add in a section of pre-K two years ago, I believe. So we had been, we had been pretty steady until we had an influx of students in pre-K. And that was another example of, the budget was already through, and we had to continue to add folks in. Pre-K teacher to paraeducators, because that's what makes up one pre-K section. Sometimes there are more paraeducators than two, because if there's a child that also needs a one-to-one paraeducator, there might be three, because there are two for the room writ large. Because remember, pre-K actually exists to ensure that we meet the needs of students with special needs. We bring in peers to balance out, so that we have students with special needs and their non-disabled peers, much like we were talking about earlier. But we, the first key is to ensure that we have a slot we have a slot for every single child in Avon who is going to come that needs special services. That's who takes the slots first. And then we add back in via the lottery, students who are non-disabled peers, which is what the law requires also. So good news. We are, as you see, looking to reallocate staff. I can't tell you what that's going to look like right now because it's a domino effect of this position is open. Who's going to, who wants to go there? And I'll just say this once upfront because there are several other places to talk about this tonight. That's the way that I think it's best to do it. When we have an open position, we need, we need one less section of pre-K. But we're going to have, for example, a special education position that's open. Who would like to transfer into that? And hopefully someone says they do because that in essence is how we also save someone's job. Because the flip side of it is, it could be, we don't need a pre-K teacher. That's it. And someone, you know, someone is laid off. We'd rather not do business that way. We have, we have good people working here. If we have somewhere else for them to go, we reallocate them. Some of these, you know this already. And let me pause a second on the paraeducator piece of this. As you know, we're already short paraeducators because they've been so difficult to hire. So right now, yes, we have two paraeducators that are attached to a pre-K. But in reducing a section next year, two people would just go to another open position if they're still with us. So that's pre-K. It still is a net reduction, though, of all three of those positions. Because when one moves into another open position and we don't backfill that position, that's where the savings comes in. So I refer to it as reductions by attrition. And as I said, we do this, we did this many times. We just haven't had to do it in the last year or two, to the extent that it's been done other years because we had seen so many influxes of students as houses were selling and more and more folks were moving into town. We had some bubble, we talked about them as bubble years of students coming through. So more often than not, we have not been in this position where we've needed to reduce an entire position, even if it was through attrition. So that's why it feels and sounds different again right now. The technology teacher, as you know, that is in the budget right now. We have not been able to fill it. It was vacant. We reimagined the courses and went by what students had enrolled in, made some changes here at the high school. And we did not add in the class that we were planning to add in at the middle school as a result of not hire, being able to hire someone after someone resigned for personal reasons at the end of last school year. So as you know, we are recommending that as we move forward in a budget where we are looking for any reductions that we can find that don't impact students right now. I probably will be back here in a year from now telling you to put the technology teacher back in because it is a part of a bigger long-term plan. We do need that course at the middle school. However, right now, we can move forward one more year without it. So there is no one in that position right now. It is not an individual that needs to be laid off or subject to a reduction force, as the official term is. So we are recommending that it be taken out of the budget and that will be a net decrease of a salary next year. If you could go again for me, Christine. Continuing there, and this is where I wanted to bring it up because we had a wellness teacher. You may remember, at least a couple of you were here when we had to add this position in. When we had an influx of students, we had to add a wellness position and to be able to manage the number of students in sections, we split the position between two schools. When you look at those sections, they're actually very low in the current year and next year, lower. So this, again, this, we, we know who the person is. We've had a conversation already because we actually talked about it even last year that if the numbers didn't change in the way the sections were, we knew we would find ourselves here. So this is not an example of, again, you think about specializations of certifications and so forth. As of right now, something could change. Someone could tell me two months from now that they didn't plan to retire and they do now. Then this would not be the case. It'd still be a net reduction to our budget. But the person who is in this position would go somewhere else if someone was no longer here. Either they resigned or they retired. But as of today, we do not have any resignations or retirements across the district in wellness. So we've made sure that that individual knows it because we'd like to make sure that while it's still, what I would refer to as hiring season, they can find a job somewhere else. And there is a shortage of these teachers also. So hopeful, confident that the person will be adversely affected in that way and they will be able to find a position in another district if that's where we land by the end of this year. Here at the high school, we've talked about this already. Stu Abrams is retiring. There's sadness even from a couple of students sitting in the audience. Knew that was coming. And our plan here, I think this is a win-win situation for the coming year at least, and we'll see what happens. I have to start this by saying, this is the plan. I can't guarantee with certainty that it will be exactly this because it depends on when they run the schedule at the high school. So Stu, Mr. Abrams and I met. He still wanted to be able to be a part of teaching if he could. And also, as you know, he runs the trips, the Freedom Tours to Europe. And as much is, that is a wonderful trip. Every single student who's ever been on it would say the same. The adults that go with them would say the same. I have to, I have to front load that with, there's also not a lot of folks that want to run that. It is a lot of work for someone. It is, you're taking a group of high school students. I think it was almost 40 of them last year when they went. It's a lot of students that you are taking to other countries with chaperones. It's a lot of liability and responsibility to take on. Stu has been the one raising his hand to do that here for many years. And we'd like to be able to continue it as long as he is physically able to. So here's what we know. That when they complete the schedule at the high school, the, the goal is that, see, the reduction is what it is because we are looking to have Stu return at least next year. And he will be retired. So there are restrictions. And this is why I say this is the plan right now. If the legislature changes something and you know, someone like Stu is not able to return to work based on certification and so forth, that could happen between now and June. Anything could happen. But as of right now, the plan is reduce it 0.8. In other words, we're not refilling his position with someone at all. What we are doing is bringing Stu back on part-time in retirement to teach one, possibly two classes. It depends on the way the course enrollments go. More than likely, it would be the genocide courses. Those are the courses that, that is the course that he developed that many others in the state have looked to mimic. And he came and asked me if it was at all possible that he come and do that. And I said, well, this looks like a win-win situation because that will allow us to continue running those courses for sure. Because as I said to you, he does teach a full load. So they are going to redistribute some. And it will allow, because he will be back on even as a part-time employee, it will allow him to, if he chooses to do this again, and I believe he will based on our conversation, to still lead that trip for the Freedom Tour and to advise the club. So we get a net reduction in the budget and we still hopefully get to offer the same elective coursework to our students at the high school with someone that we know and trust to teach it. What does that look like exactly in the fall? I can't tell you. What does that look like in a year from now? We'll, we'll wait and see. Go ahead, Jeff.
Thank you for the information. I just want to be clear, I understand. If I were to look at rosters of our teaching staff, there will be a full reduction of 3.8 FTE of physical people. That also includes, then there's the one FTE that is of current vacancy. We're going to reduce that position. But in terms of number of bodies, 3.8 FTE, correct? Does that make sense?
Yes. Of those, though, one right now, we do not, we, as of today, we do not have a slot for.
So and when I say reduction of people, it concludes those who get moved around. When I count the physical number of positions,
Correct.
We will be down 3.8 FTEs.
That's correct. Physical positions.
Physical positions. Not necessarily staff, I apologize. I didn't want.
No, I just don't want anyone to get any more nervous than they might be already when they hear this. Again, if we think anybody is impacted directly, we've spoken to them already. So that this isn't how people are finding out, that they might teach a different grade level or content.
And then we're going to be down two paras, right? That's the summation of the last two slides?
Correct.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
No problem. Any other questions? Go ahead, Ramash.
Actually, you said there are 3.8 FTEs, right? I see that as only 2.8 FTEs down and the other one will be not filled. Like because it's an open position, which is a tech, tech education teacher, right? Like which is not, which is not at all a active teacher position or whatever, which is, which we are bringing down, right? So, so the net decrease would be 2.8 FTEs or 3.8 FTEs?
Wellness. Yeah, we actually, it's actually more than that because I didn't even get to the rest of this yet.
We didn't get to all of it yet, so.
That's why I'm looking behind your head. I skipped down one.
Oh, okay.
If you're looking at the same thing that I am.
No.
On the page, I mean, okay. Thank you.
We are removing that position of a tech ed.
Yes, the tech ed position is being removed.
We might need to bring it back.
Maybe, yes. Not maybe, most likely, yes. 25, 26, you are correct, Ramash, just like we talked about in the budget workshops. There is no one in that position. There is no, as Roberto would, you know, sometimes when we're trying to differentiate between positions and souls, right? I'm saying people. He usually says souls. There is no person in that position. But the position is in the budget. So when it's taken out, it is a reduction. We were not able to hire someone. And when we figured out how to make it work, we stopped looking because it's January and then said, let's project this forward to next year and see if we can make it work for one more year. And when we knew we were able to do that, we made the right recommendation to take it out. So piece I skipped over, the elementary teacher. And this is where I, I can't put a person with it because, and they know this also, there is not an individual at this point. What there is, is in third grade at Pine Grove, when you, when you put forward, and again, this is an example of something we do every year, when you put forward second to third grade, we need one less section at Pine Grove. So it's not a third grade teacher that's losing a position. It is, however, that some, one of our elementary school teachers, because it goes by seniority and certification. One of our elementary school teachers, we are going to be looking for, this is where I started, to teach outside of the classroom. We haven't, we have some of our elementary school teachers who are also certified special education teachers. Some of them have already gone back and forth between one and the other in the same school that they are in. You probably remember us doing that, I think it was three years ago? The one with, with Jill? Three years? I'm surprised I remember that. But sometimes we've had people who have asked to do that, to be able to keep current on their certification, wanting to make a change. So that is, again, a net reduction because there, we do have to, we need to replace, there's a special education teacher who's resigning for family reasons. And we know we will have that position open at Pine Grove. And we also know we need one less third grade section at Pine Grove. So the goal will be to ask our elementary teachers at both schools because it could be either place. And that's why there might be a little bit of a domino effect here for one of them, if any one of them is interested in going into that open special education position. And there are a number of our elementary teachers who hold those dual certifications.
I know it's, excuse me, it's always a gamble with elementary classroom sizes because anything could change. My question is, by eliminate, by reducing one position in the elementary school, are any of the class sizes on the cusp of being too big?
Not in the grade we're talking about, no.
Okay. But other grades?
They're remaining the same as they are already.
Yeah.
Yeah. Not over, not projecting any of them to be over the limits, no. Again, things happen. Sometimes people move, something different hap, it could be. We're, we're confident in projecting this, this forward. Honestly, we're still keeping an eye on what it looks like from the kindergarten angle, which is why you don't see me saying anything yet about kindergarten because registration hasn't happened yet. And it, we're, and I don't feel comfortable with talking about any other positions because it could be that someone else still has to move. It depends on what that looks like. Something could change between now and two months from now. And I'll come back and let you know that. Or, or December. I just, I just wanted to mention, everyone can't see this, but if you're not sure why I shook my head, I know someone out there has a question, but they don't answer the questions right now. So I'll, I'll answer anything offline if I can. So yes, on the net reductions, that's a little over a half million dollars. And as I said, this isn't new. It's just that we haven't had to do this with more than one person in a few years. Once we know, you'll know who it is because people will transfer from one position to another. It'll be public knowledge. I just can't tell you what that looks like right now because I would like to give people the opportunity to have a say in how it moves forward. You're, I always say you're best at teaching when you're teaching, when you're where you want to be. You should be happy doing what you're doing to the extent that we can make that happen because that's when people are at their best. So we'll give folks the opportunity to make those transfers on their own. And hopefully, we're settled there and we don't have to say, I'm sorry. No one raised their hand. We'd like you to be the one that goes to do it. But every once in a while, that's how it happens.
We appreciate the relationships that you've formed with the staff, too. It's a people business and I like that style of leadership personally, so.
We all, there are, it is the people that are out in the classrooms. No matter how much I'm visiting or I'm sitting in a class or I'm getting in those students or I'm watching lessons or I'm coming to recess, they're the ones that are, that are teaching everyone's children day in and day out. So that's who we have to think about when we're having these kinds of conversations. Christine, could you? Thank you. So we make sure we put general fund here just because you know, some pieces are funded under federal IDEA grant, for example. But these are pieces that impact the local budget. You know, I always have notes, right? And then I just keep going, don't even look at what I've typed out or what Susan has typed out for me. So I just want, you know, it's just how my mind works. Once they're down, I don't necessarily look at them again, but I want to make sure I didn't miss something. So I already, you already saw this on another slide and the line items. We have, we do have an increased number of students requiring programming and increased costs of those programs. Like everything else, inflation doesn't stop at special education tuition, unfortunately, and also contracted services, as I already mentioned. That increase is just about a quarter of a million dollars. And while we're here, I'll give you a couple more examples of things that would be contracted services. You know, we employ our own occupational and physical therapists. However, sometimes there might, there might be additional needs above and beyond what we have here in district. That's another example of something you might see in a contracted service for special education. A student maybe who has a plan and is on homebound instruction due to a medical issue, you might see here because we have to contract people outside of the school district at times to work with those students. So that is 0.36% of the overall, 4.5 increase. Susan, I'm, Susan, Christine, if you keep going. Sorry, did I miss something, is that why you're looking at me? Sorry, what did I say? I didn't say, oh, sorry. Go ahead. It's like I'd be saying it in my sleep at this point. Mentioned this already, go ahead, Ramesh.
Yeah, I think in previous slide, right, there is a fixed cost, when we've gone through the fixed costs and the budget drivers, right? You mentioned about special education contract services, increase was 62 grand, something? And now this is like 250 grand, is 62 grand is part of this 250 grand or both are two different?
Yeah, this was, that was just breaking it down, that was adding in the changes in tuition also. So if you go back, Christine. So this $250,000 is an increase in some pieces of transportation, because some went down, some went up. The number of students who are out and just some increase in the services overall, that's what brings us to 250,000. That 62,000 you're talking about was on that one contracted services line, correct, Susan? This is the, this is, this is both combined. Just like, I'm just re-categorizing them for you under the focus areas, because this is the special education that's specifically related to student learning. Go ahead, Christine, if you could, thank you. Go ahead. I didn't think so. I didn't think so, Susan, but I, I also thought, maybe I couldn't see it right from my glasses, I don't think that's what we had on our version. Yeah. Yep, when we were redoing it. 0.38, yes. Sorry, because we were, we had a working copy that Susan and I were in. And we printed this out for you, outside of that. You could probably fix it on the slide right now, actually. Can you refresh it, Christine, just, I just want to make sure for the sake of the recording and questions that people might have later, that the right one is up there. Thank you. I already mentioned the athletic trainer. That is when we categorize it, thinking about budget goals, that's communication partnerships. As you know, that we, we lost the athletic trainer that we had in district. And this is the new going rate. We had to, I know, again, all of you know this, but everyone sitting out there may not know this. We actually, months ago, closer to the beginning of the school year, had to bring a budget transfer from one line item to another for the board to approve. So that we could pay for the new athletic trainer contract in the current year. We are required to have one. This is, for those who may not know, this is not someone who's coming and showing the students how to run marathons or how to properly lift weights. And as a quote trainer, it's someone that provides medical type services to students on and off the field. So if you've ever been, say, at a football game and a student is hurt out on the field, maybe before, if they do have to go to the hospital, or they don't have to go to the hospital at all. Oftentimes, the person that you will see going out to them, depending on whether or not ours is at that game, is our athletic trainer. Going out to check the injury, to, to give them some advice, to, to help get them off the field, to ice it, to make recommendations. If it is a bad enough injury that they might be transported to the hospital, to work with the student until they are transported out, that's what an athletic trainer does for us. Substitute services, this increase, in large part, is due to the Connecticut paid sick leave law that was passed. That we literally just had to figure out how to put in, into effect, and it's, for the current year, and it's January. So that's been a little bit difficult, of an upheaval. You may have seen too, there are, there are two sides to this, certainly, you want people to be able to utilize paid sick leave. People have, people, people get sick, people have children or other close family members that get sick. And this law was generated primarily in the service industry, because there were, it's not a typical thing to have paid sick leave for people that work in the service industry, such as waiters, waitresses in restaurants. And that's where this originated, but it, when it was passed into law, it applied to everyone. And tonight's not the night to discuss all this soup to nuts, but it is, has been causing us some serious operational issues. Not just us, but many school districts, because one of the things that it does is chain, we have, first of all, we have union contracts in effect related to sick time. And this law supersedes them. So we've had to make changes there. Give you an example of that. You have to be allowed to take sick leave in hour-long increments now. We have union contracts that don't say that, and there's a reason for that. Because when you are staffing school buildings and, you know, Ms. Heston, as it used to be, wants to leave for the doctor. And you need someone to be in the classroom, because I can't just leave and leave the classroom empty. We contract for a sub, for example, for a half day. Now, if Ms. Heston wants to leave for an hour and come back, we are either paying for someone for a full half day or doing what we very often do anyway, we can, and trying to cover the time with someone else who has it in the building. Nonetheless, it applies to everyone. So think about, you know, it's, I have a one-to-one parent educator as a student. And that person is going to use, utilize an hour and a half of sick time. And we're going to figure out how, so operationally, it's been a challenge. But in addition to that, it's a challenge from a budgetary perspective, because it applies to everyone, whether or not they already had paid sick leave on the books. So if you did not have accrued time as of right now, you just got accrued time to be utilized between now and the end of this year. We had, we had to do that. And so now projecting that forward, we're going to pay more to Kelly Services, because they've also had to increase their rates to make up for the same. So that's part of what you're seeing here. And there's, at present, nothing to do about that, besides what we've already worked through. And there is, I saw today in a legislative update that came, that there is a bill being discussed to exempt school districts in the state from this. I don't know where that will land, but right now, we're making sure that we're projecting the costs. It's also the minimum wage, the minimum wage increasing, and we've already talked, sorry, we've already talked about that as a board. The minimum wage increasing impacted us also, because we had some of our own employees who were newer hires. Remember, we had to think about increasing the contract hourly rates in nutrition services, for example. Because there were some people that were so close to minimum wage that we wouldn't have been in compliance with the law. And in addition to the fact that we need nutrition services workers and they're very difficult to hire, that's not in the line we're talking about right now. But I'm just using that as an example, because we've already spoken about it. Kelly has had to increase their wages as a result, that's what we're talking about here.
Yes, I just wanted to point out, because, you know, we do enter contract with them, so I want to make sure that everyone understands, we, we have a contract. But when the state law changes and raises the minimum wage mid-school year, and has done so three times over the last 18 months, because of inflation, we then have to go readdress and change our rate, because we are only paying minimum wage, trying to keep our daily rate as low as possible to keep our fiscal, be fiscally responsible. And luckily, we still have employee, not employee, our employees, but Kelly employees who love the district so much, or that they're residents, they still come and work. Even though we, you know, we pay the minimum wage for that. But we've continually had to re-sign rate agreements with them to keep up with the minimum wage changes, which is resulting in higher costs here.
We did discuss this also more at length in the last board workshop, but there are oftentimes questions about, why use Kelly Services then? Why not just, you know, handle, use a different agency, use an individual person? Did that in a previous district that I worked in for some years, before we switched to an agency at some point, I think actually, when I wasn't superintendent. But as we discussed at the workshop, generally speaking, it's actually more cost-effective for us to contract with Kelly Services than to manage, hire, ensure that some of the other required trainings are had, et cetera. Provide health insurance, because they are our employees, remember when the federal law changed there? If, if every one of the people that we contract through Kelly Services for, sometimes a few days here, sometimes a few days there, were on our books, we would be offering them all the rest of the benefits also. So from a financial standpoint, it actually is more conducive, we've looked at it more than once. Likewise, generally speaking, they do a good job in managing a lot of moving parts and with their fill rate. No one has a great fill rate since 2020. You call any school in any school district in the state of Connecticut, and you won't find anyone who every single day has all of the subs in. There are, they are always missing people. We actually do better than most between working with them and having some of our own building subs for times when we can't get them. And again, that's not necessarily about this that's in front of us, but I think it's a question we hear, so just wanted to address it. Christine, if you could, thank you. Utilities, as we already talked about. Unfortunately, the school district is not immune to the increases that we are all paying for every possible utility. That is 0.14% of our overall increase. And again, these are projections based on what we see coming and usage rates. Jeff, I believe it was you, that had asked previously, as, as residential customers, there was quite a do about a charge being put on the bills for.
Public benefit.
For public benefits. And Jeff had asked in a previous meeting, whether or not that applied to places like school districts and municipalities. And at the time, we actually did not think that it did, we didn't get any notification that said that, and it didn't specify that on the bills. We had to dig in and find out that it actually is there, it's just included, and it just, the rate itself went up. It's not listed out separately like it is on our residential bills. So that's also part of the increase.
Time frame on that, of when that's going to end or any idea?
They, they said the current, and I, I use the quote, current fees are supposed to end in April of '25, but they meet every year. And PERSA, I think it is, or PURA recommends additional fees or new fees. And that will happen well after our budget passes and goes to referendum. So the most conservative approach would be to consider our rates as they are right now and project that forward. Hopefully, something changes, but I don't see it.
Christine. Again, back to the benefits, the pension, the OPEB, spent quite a bit explaining that already. One piece of good news, again, the growth fund on the pension actually made our contribution less than it otherwise would have been. Which may remember, that was a negative number, it actually went down. That's because the funds that are invested in are doing well. Likewise, on OPEB, or it would be a higher increase than it is between us having to make up for what we didn't put in last year and the increase for this year. Go ahead, Christine, beat that, never mind, sorry, horse being well-fed, trying to remember that new saying. Dental, we already talked about this, we have a 9% premium increase there. When you put all of those benefits together, so it's not just the two on this slide, it's everything together, that net increase is 995,260. Again, I'm just, we're just categorizing it differently for you to see it, kind of trying to break them down smaller and then put them back together in aggregate form. Because I think it makes more sense when you look at it in this way. But also, you've had the opportunity to go line by line with us over this process. So 1.43 of it includes these benefits that we're talking about, health insurance, OPEB, dental, and other. Christine, go ahead. Back to the software, I don't, I know you don't want to be here until midnight with me, when you've already talked about a lot of this, so I don't want to belabor it. Let me know if you, do you want me to go back through some of the individual lines and changes here, for example? Because I have them in my notes, again, itemized out, in case we were going to go there. I'll give you an example of that, we talked about it in the budget workshop. Maraki renewal, that's what we need to use for Wi-Fi access points. We had prepaid that with a five-year previously. That increase is $33,560 of the $108,976 increase. That's an example of what's inherent in that overall increase. The time clocks that we are, are ending life and the software that, you know, we've had to put in, that's 31,117 of the increase. The hardware we've already spoken about with the Chromebooks. Okay, just want to make sure.
Thank you.
Instructional supplies, again, we talked about this at all the workshops, but in summation, the math program, some of those are consumables. We knew that as we moved forward, we purchased as much as that, of that as we could initially to keep the budget down last year and moving into this year. With grant funds, we're not able to use those to do that again. So the consumables for the year moving forward are now in the budget. And overall, as you know, we reduced the supplies. Supply line item as a whole was reduced, but there are some things that had to be increased. We talked about this at the budget workshop, clay, for example, we needed new, we need new clay next year for pottery at the high school. We finally exhausted the inventory that we had from some of the kits since the pandemic, when they were unable to use them. We have inventoried, and I'm glad there's not more, actually, the one I had out there left. She probably would have nodded her head and perhaps rolled her eyes, as I say what I'm about to say. We, you know, we inventoried every glue stick and marker in the district. Made some people unhappy in, in, in the process, trying to go through every single closet, you know, cabinet and so forth. The inventories are exhausted and in, in many areas, and the, where we did have to increase, that's why.
I will say to emphasize that, of the 224,000 listed on here, 210 is two line items. So all the other supplies, the books, the paper, everything else is only increased a very small amount. The other two, $210,000 is software and hardware. So that, I think that leads to the hard work that the buildings have done, really going through line by line, closet by closet of what we have. And we tried to keep that very minimal, anywhere they needed things like the clay for art, or they then took something else down to offset. We asked them to do that work, so I thank them for that.
Okay. Again, overall, the transportation is decreased, because there are some increases, but some decreases. And again, this is not special education transportation, this is separate. But when you put them both together, this is where we are. See, Susan, the last bullet here is what Susan was talking about with Farmington Valley Transition Academy, correct, Susan? So this is where we land again, where we started tonight, and. She's saying the, the net and the gross again. Go ahead, yeah.
So in previous years, we, we had our gross budget, and then we offset it by revenues, which normally decreased it. In this particular year, and I'll point to, point to the state on this one fairly. The excess cost grant, for the third, third year in a row, we were promised reimbursement percentages of 80% for our district. This year, they estimated we're going to get funding at 59%. So the last three years, we've reduced our excess cost country, our excess cost projection, because we're not getting funded, what we should be. So the growth of our revenues is not as high as the growth of our expenditures, because that reimbursement percentage keeps going down. So that's why this year, unfortunately, our gross and net, when we put them together and compare them, we actually go up.
The opposite of usual.
And also, our choice numbers are, are pretty static, we don't anticipate any increase. The two years prior, when we had that increase, we were able to utilize that boom of choice funds. And then last year, we budgeted for that increase. So we had a nice tick up in revenue from the 2,000 to 6,000, 6,000 to 8,000 per pupil. This year, again, we, we budgeted that appropriately last year, so there's no, there's no boom in increase there as, as well. there as well. So the only other way to increase the revenues to offset any of this would be to talk about the individual revenues that the board might pay to play, or pre-K tuition, or parking fees, or any of those other line items that we could possibly increase to offset this. That would be a conversation. In previous conversations with the board, when we looked at the fee structure, I didn't think there was appetite for that at this time.
It's hard to increase fees that you're asking, in my opinion, at least I think most agree. You're asking folks to pay. Reval pushes their taxes up. Budget pushes the taxes up, and then you ask them to pay more fees for students to park at school or to participate in athletics. That's insult to injury, I think, but.
Just to add to that, I did, in preempting thoughts here, I did have some queries out. I had my staff call all the surrounding districts and all the surrounding DIRDB, and we are, if, one of the highest, if not the highest, in most of those fees. So, you know, not to say that we should reduce them, but just to say that I'm not sure there's any room for increasing them either to be in line.
Not in pre-K, I don't think.
Not in pre-K, but we decided as a board to increase it by our budget percentage every year to represent that, but the fees themselves were right in line.
And there, when I first started, we were working at and talking about trying to phase them out of the budget. Maybe only the two of you remember that, because you're the only two that were here. And with the way we've seen budgets grow, mostly with inflation and increasing the cost of benefits more than anything else, we have not gone back down that path again, because it actually is significant when you look at the bottom line.
Got it. Lynn, and then Jeff.
Speaking of other districts, what's your sense of other districts' budgets at this point in time, their increases?
So the average is over 5%. I have the sheet that Dr. Carnamal has shared with everyone. I did update that this evening.
A few more came in.
From a few more came in. We have a 5.46, 7.09 in Cheshire, which is another DIRDB district. We have 4.88, 6.53 for Guilford, another DIRDB, 5.75, 6.02 for Monroe, another DIRDB, 5.96 for Newtown. So the budgets are significant out there, and most drivers of reading any of the notes that I've read or talking to my peers is health insurance is a huge driver. It is for us over 1% of the budget. And just the cost of inflation, you know, I meet with my peer group, I'm on the executive board, and we get together and we try to find ways through consortiums, through collective bids, through whatever we can find to kind of offset some of these costs, but tuition, out-of-district tuition is always a big driver, as well as just the cost of supplies. Inflation's hit the district very hard regardless of the contracts we have.
Gotcha.
Was it in the finance? We've had so many meetings. First of all, thank you. We've had more meetings about the budget this budget cycle than in previous years. I want to say six meetings, including finance committee meetings, budget workshops, full board meetings. I believe it was in finance that you did share what the state funding was for surrounding communities.
Yes.
And I think that's a piece of information that should be shared with the public, because when we looked at our neighboring towns, they exceeded the amount of funding multiple times. And we still don't have a clear understanding why we get less than $1 million and everyone else gets three, four, five times the amount of money.
Ten.
Ten times. I stand corrected, ten times, despite the fact, you know, the continued unfunded mandates, literacy program, which I'm a big fan of, and so forth. And I think that's something that the community needs to understand as well, that we are inhibited more than our surrounding communities, and that in order to meet the basic needs, combined with the unfunded mandates and all the other responsibilities, the state is saying to Avon particularly, you're on your own. And I think that's an important piece of information to share with the community, to understand why, while yes, it's 4.56, which is much lower than we started, we are still looking at a reduction in force. And I know that phrase in contract language is a little scary, even you've already addressed number of bodies, actually, and so forth. That's problematic, because we are hearing that there's an impact on the quality of education that we're able to deliver. I am confident that we'll be able to deliver top-quality education. I have faith and confidence in our teachers, but we're making it more difficult, and the state is making it more difficult on us.
And can I just add to that, Jeff, maybe not tonight, but at some point? I'd be curious, Cheshire, Guilford, Monroe, Newtown, what are they getting from the state also? So they're coming in at the seven, the six increase, just, you know, kind of curious. I don't know if you have that.
We did get that spreadsheet that gives us all the time.
Is it back here?
It was in email.
It's a shared Google Doc, but I can drop it on for you if you'd like. I can drop their funding levels, at least DIRBs, onto the state.
Right. And that's where I know we saw some of it.
You don't have to look in two different places. You can look in the same spot.
Right. But to Jeff's point, for the public to understand in simple terms what we're looking at comparably is, I think, helpful.
Especially because that was discussed, I think, in the finance committee, not necessarily at a full public board meeting.
And several of you asked, Suzanne included, I'll bring that up, because Suzanne had also emailed me after our last workshop, and some of you said it in the workshop too, looking for clarification again from the state on why the funding is what it is. Brandon Robertson and I had a conversation. He actually forwarded me a communication today. He reached out to start that ball rolling again. The funding goes, it is our funding, but it goes to the town. So it's a partnership between us and the town, going to the town, and they offset to our budget with it. So Brandon and I spoke and are trying to set that up again. As you know, we have had legislators come before and people from the school finance project, but we're looking for an explanation again, and I'll let you know what we get back and whether or not we can get someone to come and speak, whether it's here with you or it's on the town side, I can't say, but I'm working on it through my channels and Brandon is through his.
And I'd like to point out just how responsible you are in handling the projections, because I know other districts over-project, and then they get hurt very badly when it comes to reality. They do not have the funds to pay for what they anticipated, because they over-anticipate what the state is going to provide. We are always conservative, to be honest and on top of it, so that is a huge service to the community, to know reality versus dreaming. Yeah. I also was, can you point out, I will say it, but every meeting that we have had, this budget has come down in percentage. So even from last week to this week, what was the number last week when we met?
517, I think.
And now we're at 4.5.
Correct.
That's impressive. So I hope the community sees how hard we've been chiseling away to try to get lower as best we can. I really appreciate the efforts. I appreciate the counting of blue sticks.
I do too, thank you.
It's a lot, but we can all feel confident that this conversation is built on reality, so.
We did talk about, you know, speaking of reduction in force, I was asked if the board would need to take action about notifying people. The answer to that is yes, but it's not yes tonight. It's, right now, you see the way we've been working through it. We are in compliance with what we need to do legally and contractually, and obviously, as, you know, ethically, I would say, morally, as human beings that we're talking to people that might be impacted, that the difference here is, there's a different conversation to be had. We have had it already, but I wanted to bring it up again, because I was just asked this question, if something had to be on the agenda tonight. When you, as a school district, foresee difficult budget conditions, or sometimes school districts just do this as a matter of course, many times. I told you in the previous district where I was the superintendent, this was our procedure. It just was not the procedure when I took over here, and in the time that I have been here, we had not ever needed to communicate out a larger reduction in force, and in part, it's because every year, even when we have actually reduced positions, we've done it other ways, like we're talking about tonight. And we had an early retirement incentive twice years ago. That is still on the table. We were asked about that possibility again. Is there anything that would, that would work favorably for both the school district and those who might want to retire sooner than later? Susan has still been running some of those numbers as of tonight. I don't have anything to tell you about that, or would have brought it up. That's usually a tough decision, because it has to work out just right for it to make sense for both the people who might retire and for us financially. And with having done it twice years ago, we're in a different position now with the staff that's here, with the faculty that's here, in the number of years that they have and the age they might be in related to insurance and/or Medicare. So we're looking at a different group of educators as a whole, at what point they're in their lives and so on than we were the last time we did it. In other words, I'm not certain there's something we can make work for them or for us. Right now, we'll continue to look at it to see if it makes sense, and if it does, then we'll be back talking about that. So we don't need to do anything about that right now. From the reduction force angle, after we went through the budget cycle last year, one of the things that we were thinking about as it went further on was if we did need to lay anyone off after the budget was approved, they needed to be notified by law. And so as a matter of course, back to what some districts just do, is notify every single person that is certified, that's faculty and/or administration, because that's what the law requires, that if you're certified, tenured and certified is what I mean, not every, not every, non-tenured, yes, sorry, non-tenured and but certified. The law requires that if you are potentially going to lose your position due to a budgetary issue, you're notified by, I believe it's March 15th. And it's just a wide scale, so you might be a person who was tenured in another district and you came, which means you worked more than four years and achieved successful tenure somewhere else. You might have come to us 15 years in, but this is your first year with us, and so you're not tenured yet again. It's those people that would have to be notified. It's the first-year teacher who doesn't have tenure yet that would have to be notified, because those, it goes in order of seniority, and it's also part of why, when I say elementary teacher, I'm not pointing anyone out in particular, because, as I said, first, it's can you raise your hand, because we'd like you to do something else? And when and if that doesn't work, it's you are the least senior person that has both of those certifications, and we think you, and we think you can do the job. Or you're not the least tenured person, but we do think you are the most qualified to do it, and so we are administratively transferring you there. It can happen either of those ways. If we are going to notify all teachers and admin, and I'm saying that because it's certified people that the law requires, that the possibility exists that our budget could be reduced so drastically that there would be more people that might have, that might actually lose their position, not be able to move somewhere else, we have to put that on the board agenda in February. And between now and, I've already been talking about this with the union, if this is the direction, between now and February, I would meet with all of those people that would get a letter and tell them, yes, that's possible on the one hand. On the other hand, do I, do I think it's quote "likely"? And that's what people will want to know from me. And my answer would be no, to be honest. Would it be likely, meaning we are working through every possible person that we think we can move forward without impacting class sizes and student services without having to do that large, wide-scale? But still, something could change between now and the end of the year. Maybe enrollment decreases X amount more at some particular school or grade level or something, and if we are then in a position much further down the road where, no, we don't have a different place for a position, a person in a position to go, but we do need to further reduce the budget, if you are going to be in compliance with the law as a board, people have to be notified. So I know we've talked about that. I know no one wants to talk about that, but I think if we're going to make sure that we are in compliance and prepare for what could be worst-case scenario, then you should put it on the agenda. I should meet with the people. I've already met with people, but as I already said, or someone else has, and yet, they're still going to see me, but they're aware of what's happening. I just think that's the safest path forward. No, you're not taking any action on that right now, so I'm not looking for you to do that, but I just want to put it out here, because it won't be a surprise if and when it's on the agenda.
With this current budget, we're talking physically loss of one individual, correct?
At this time.
At this time, with this current budget, if this was sealed in stone for the entire school year, which I know doesn't happen, we're only talking one individual, and part of it is because of the licensing issue.
It is because
Reduction in the section and it's specific to a license.
Yes. There's not, the person does not hold another certification to be able to move somewhere else.
Thank you.
And just to piggyback on that question, right, so just to clarify, how many non-tenured, certified people we have currently in the school district?
The exact number, I believe, is 52 or 53.
We've hired a lot of people over the last few years, because we have seen a lot of retirements since 2020, and a few resignations, too. There are, there are folks who decided it was something besides teaching that they were going to do, in larger numbers everywhere over the past few years. So a lot of our, this is back to what I was saying about a retirement, an early retirement plan, that's exactly one of the reasons that may not work for us when 52.
And you'll have to notify all 52?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, and the reason is because even if you've been here, this is your fourth year and you're just about to get tenure, you don't have it yet, if you have a specialty, you know, if you have a certification in X, and that's exactly what it is, and there's no other room, you can't foresee what might happen by the time you get there, which is exactly why we're talking about it. If some other things changed and we were looking for other reductions, like we were asked to do last year and in the year before, and we've done them, that's, that's the safe step to take, because, and it's also from even just ethically, again, it's, it's in the best interest of the people that we're speaking about, too, because if they, if people are told it's even a possibility, they might be able to find another position sooner than later. That's also not great for us in many ways, and I already said this to you, because if and when, we don't need to eliminate any of those people, because the numbers haven't changed in the sections, for example, and there's no, that's it, we still need them, like I'm telling you tonight that we do, and some of them left because they were worried we're rehiring people when we had, and losing people that we've already invested the time in. And inevitably, that does happen. And I say that as someone who, as a teacher, got one of those notices myself my first year, and didn't think that I wanted to take the chance.
Any other questions or thoughts? Suzanne, anything from you? You're good? Okay.
I just, go ahead, Nicole.
I just wanted to circle back to the ECS funding. I know you and I have spoken a lot about that. Susan, first off, thank you so much for all the information that you sent, because I've really gone through it the last, you know, we
really gone through it the last week or so. And I just have something that I'd like to say because it's been weighing on me a lot. I'd first like to thank Dr. Carnamora and Susan Russo for your tireless efforts over the last several months in trying to keep the budget increases palatable. There has been significant progress on this budget between each workshop and meeting, and I would also like to recognize all of the school administrators for trying to find ways to cut costs at each school and department. However, the reality is that costs are rising significantly, and this is driven by many factors beyond the control of our administrators. One item beyond the district's control is continued unfunded state mandates and policies. Another factor beyond the district's control is the amount of state funding we receive from the Education Cost Sharing Program. I have continued to review our funding from this program, and I'm outraged at the small amount of money that Avon receives from the state. Last year, we received $909,358 in ECS funds and are projected to receive $832,104 this year. Simsbury received $7,482,940 last year and is projected to receive $8,329,719 this year. This is approximately 10 times more than we receive. In 2020, that's the most recent year, which I was able to find reliable data, Simsbury, with a population of 24,516 residents, paid $97.5 million of state income tax or $4,339 per capita. Avon, with 18,918 residents, paid $93.3 million or $5,501 per capita. Avon is paying 25% more per capita in state income taxes and receiving approximately 90% less ECS funding. Avon has one of the highest per capita income tax contributions in the entire state, along with very few towns, mostly in Fairfield County. If the perception of the state government is that all Avon residents are wealthy and can pay any amount in taxes, I can assure everyone that this is a mistake. I have spoken with many Avon residents who cannot afford any more increases. It is the responsibility of Avon's elected municipal government to advocate for Avon's long-term interests and to represent its citizens and taxpayers. It is incumbent of our town-elected officials to give voice to our taxpayers. In the next few weeks, I will be drafting a letter to our state representatives and state senator outlining the disparity in Avon's tax contributions and our level of state funding. I certainly will share it in advance and would welcome any and all town government officials to co-sign it before it is officially delivered. I also encourage all Avon residents to contact their state legislators demanding appropriate levels of state funding for Avon schools. I am deeply conflicted on this budget as I do not think it is fair to continue to ask Avon taxpayers for more money year after year while the state refuses to provide Avon a fair share of ECS funding. However, I also do not think it's fair for our students, teachers, and staff to be penalized for this. That is why, after careful consideration, I am choosing to abstain from voting on the budget at this time, and I'm asking the state that the state look into their opaque formula and relieve the burden of Avon taxpayers by increasing the ECS funds we receive to match that of Simsbury on a per-student basis.
Thank you, Nicole. Anything else?
Just want to be clear because of the conversation related to potential reductions in force. If I had other, I or we had other recommendations for people's positions that could be reduced and still be able to keep moving forward what we are doing as a district, managing what we manage as a school district, and keeping the supports, the services, and the teachers in front of our students that we need, you would have already heard that from me. So to be clear, I'm not bringing that up because, you know, there's a pot full of positions behind me that later on we'll be able to say, yes. I'm saying it because if something changes, I think that people should all be notified. I don't know right now what that change would be, but I just think it would be prudent for us to do that. And in the meantime, as I say at the end of this slide, we added that in right before we came tonight, yes, we are going to continue to look, do we have the exact right number of sections that we need to, is there something we missed? Is there anything else to do? And if we do find anything else, we will bring it back to you as a board and/or to the town council, the Board of Finance, depending on what part of the process that we are in. But as we are here tonight, this is it. We've reduced everything we could find from this budget.
Go ahead, Lynn.
Well, I think, given the reality of what money is coming in and what you've presented, it's a very responsible document, this budget. I'm very comfortable moving it forward. If we can get more money from the state, terrific. But right now, we can only vote on what we have before us. I think it's amazing how much you have done as a team. I also might be reading more into your comments, Dr. Carnamora, but are you comfortable waiting until February for us to have that vote, or is it something you want us to do tonight?
No, we can do it in February. I would rather have the opportunity to start talking to people before it's even on the agenda. And that's what, I've talked about the association also. You know, our teachers were there for a lot of the budget process and the meetings and so on last year. Everyone knows what the impact has been of reevaluation and inflation and increases on taxes. So it won't be news to folks that we need to continue to look at how we're doing business and whether or not there are any other ways to either increase the income, certainly would like to do that, or to reduce the expenditures. I mean, and these are not, as we talked about at the last workshop, these are not surface-level pieces. These aren't things that, you know, we never even had that we're saying we're not going to do now. These are reductions that we have made from the year we're living in, moving forward to the actual bottom line, not theoretical.
Can I ask a question? So last year's budget aside, in the previous years, I've been on the board for a few years, but in the previous years, maybe, Susan, this is for you, is this, is 5% usually typical or is it more like 3%? What is a typical increase?
This is higher than we'd like to see, higher than quote-unquote "normal," but you know, the town was in during the pandemic in a low 1%.
Okay.
And then we saw a rebound of that year to 399, 490. So it, then inflation hit.
Right.
Right? And in order to keep programming the way it is without a significant reduction in staff, they're just, this is the new reality we're in, and I just don't think everyone's kind of settled into that because it's hard to swallow, and it's hard for the resident, I'm a resident, it's hard to swallow that as a taxpayer. But when I look across all the districts in the state, as I talk to my peers, I look at the data that I've shared with you all, this is the new reality everyone's in currently.
Right, and I think that's the point I'm trying to emphasize or even for me to understand, you know, where we are, it's not, it's not, yes, it's not an Avon problem, it's not a unique sort of situation. This is across the board.
It's statewide, and, you know, and health insurance is a big driver for us and it's a big driver for everyone, and that's a much larger problem than Avon, right? Where the health industry is, right? We do everything humanly possible to keep our costs down, negotiate our contracts, go out to bid every single year to renew with Cigna or any one of our vendors. We evaluate them on all those committees, we evaluate what our stop-loss should be and what kind of insurance we purchase. We go out to bid for that. So everything we can do, we look at self-funding versus premium versus the state cooperative plan. But health insurance and the cost of claims, and not to get too far down the rabbit hole, but the, you know, the weight loss drug industry right now, it's a huge cost driver for everyone across the country and until some parameters are put on by bodies higher than ours in terms of, you know, the FDA or whoever, to curb that, that's a huge driver.
Thank you.
For everyone.
Thank you.
Any other comments? So I just want to be clear that as the Board of Education, it is our role to represent the students and the staff. And so the action that we take together clarifies that we support the work that has been done by administration. So as much as we might be uncomfortable with the number as taxpayers ourselves and not like that it is what it is, I think it's important that we stick together in terms of saying we believe in the work that has been done, and this is the most responsible thing we can do at this time, and hopefully, things will go down as time goes on and even before this goes to referendum perhaps. But for the time being, I think it's good for us to speak as a body and say that we support the work that has been done. So if we're comfortable, we can take the vote, and I'll make the motion to approve the budget as has been presented for the 2025, 2026 school year. Do I have a second? Thank you, Lynn. All in favor? All right, I count, wait, one, two, seven. Those opposed? Those abstaining? Two abstaining. All right. After that, any communication from the public? Okay, any communication from Board of Education members? All right, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Actually, I just wanted to thank Dr. Carnamora and Susan for giving this transparency and clarity here, right? So I think, I just want to be clear, right? I'm abstaining in voting here because I see that we will continue to seek reductions. And at the same time, I think to Nicole's point, right, like, so I think we are not getting the fair ECS share compared to the neighboring districts, as well as even in some of the Derby districts, right? Like, for example, you called up the Cheshire, right? I know for Cheshire, like, it's, the budget is 7%, or something, but their ECS share is like 8 million or something. So it's, I don't know where is the issue here from the Avon side, but I think we need to pursue that opportunity in terms of asking for more from the ECS perspective. And at the same time, we don't want to put the burden on the taxpayer fully for this year, right? So because last year, we have seen the churn in terms of like how it's put in, right? The inflationary is for everybody, even for the taxpayers, right? Everybody has to bear the cost. So I think when we present to the town council and into the referendum, right, I think we just wanted to go in a more optimized budget reductions, right, and so that we can get a full approval from the public as well. So with that said, so I'm abstaining from this and continuing to looking forward for more reductions in our next meeting. So, thank you.
Just for clarification, that these funds, there can be no change to that this school year, right? We're not.
Highly doubtful.
Right.
Moving forward, hopefully, but they're already in session and the likelihood that they're going to come up with more money for Avon this year is unrealistic, I think. I don't think we shouldn't advocate for it. Of course, we shouldn't. We've been doing that since I've been on the board. We've had legislators come and talk to us. We've had training on what the formula is. So there is effort that's been made, but I think we have to, from a town perspective, be responsible for our budget and ideally pursue that, but we have to be responsible with what we have to work with, so.
Agreed.
I don't know if there's any other questions or comments from board members. All right, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All right, Sarah, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Chris. All in favor?
Hi.
Eye passes unanimously at 9:24.